Good evening. The June 13th Board of Education meeting is called to order. This Board of Education is dedicated to the making the Wichita Public Schools the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. We are happy to have you with us tonight, either in person or viewing us on whatever device you're watching in. Tonight, we would start with a moment of silence with a special recognition of our friends and our neighbors in Texas. If you'll join me in a moment of silence. Tonight's pledge of allegiance is done by, is tonight by the South High JROTC Connor Fawcett, Ever Rojas, Gabe Butler, and Sarah Ransom. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Colors, all, right, face, forward, march.
You may be seated. A quick round of applause for South High JROTC. One advantage of having the meeting here at AMAC, we get to see a little extra fancy drilling, so we appreciate that. Patrick, first item, please.
Under reports, good news.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board. Before I invite Dr. Hatfield up to introduce you to the middle school robotics national, national, national qualifying teams from our school district, I want to take an opportunity to give a shout out to the WPS community for everything we did to represent what's amazing about this district at the Wichita River Festival. So you all know my passion for festival and my long time involvement. This year, it really struck me how much Wichita Public Schools means to this community and to the Wichita River Festival. And when I was doing some research, this was the 50th anniversary of the festival back in 1972 and 1973, when the festival got its beginnings, back when we had gymnastics in the district, we had students out displaying gymnastic skills and other kinds of skills for the community. So we've been a part of this event for 50 years. And so, some of you may know that we gave away thousands of books on Sunday of the River Festival. We had kids from all over the place that were so thrilled that in collaboration with the United Way, we were able to give away thousands of free books. During the parade, on the first night, the All City Marching Band, which was the magnificent band in the parade, won the best band award. And the, I'm going to try really hard to say this right, Fabian, Raisus, Demetiera Ballet Folklorico, won People's Choice, they tied with the Band for People's Choice. And they are students that came together organically because they and their families believe in keeping the culture alive. And so, East High, West High, Robinson Middle, Spate Elementary, Washington Elementary, Horseman, Mead Middle, and Franklin Elementary, students from all of those schools were involved and just crushed it. They were amazing, they were beautiful and handsome, and they were so visible, not only in the parade, but during Fiesta del Rio and in Kids' Corner. Horseman's Folkloric Dance Group represented us so distinguished, in such a distinguished manner. We had volunteers that were selling food court tickets one night. There was one evening where every volunteer was from WPS. There were other days when esteemed volunteers like our own Dr. Thompson, through her sorority group, were selling tickets. There are WPS volunteers in every corner of this organization. Numerous nights onstage, there were performers that were students, including our schoonermate from Northeast Magnet High School that could sing, man could he sing, and he was onstage with all of the adults in the gospel choir. It was fabulous. And then, of course, our schoonermates that represented WPS in so many corners and events during the festival. I want to conclude real quick and give a special shout out to Fabian Armendaros, and he'll clobber me for doing this, but, but the shout out is deserving. Fabian serves as a member of the Wichita Festival's Board of Directors. And for those of you who may have been present or heard about an absolutely amazing Fiesta del Rio on Friday, second Friday of the River Festival, tens of thousands of people, a brilliant, beautiful showcase of Hispanic culture, that was Fabian's vision about five years ago, and he kept working it and kept working it and wanted so much to make this happen and bring it to light. And I could not be more proud of him for advocating for our kids and for inclusion. And so, he, he too crushed it. And I saw you begin to applaud, I would invite you to applaud with me because he deserves the props for the amazing work. So there are some other folks here that deserve props for their amazing work, too. You noticed earlier, I underlined the word national qualifiers. We had kiddos from six, excuse me, three schools that went to Dallas, Texas, and represented Wichita Public Schools in the National Robotics Tournament. So Dr. Lauren Hatfield, one of our executive directors for secondary schools, is going to come forward and introduce you to them and their coaches.
Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce our six teams from three schools that all qualified for the VEX Robotics World Championships in Dallas, Texas, May 3rd through the 5th. So they have already gone and represented our school district. I'm going to introduce each coach and then allow the coach to introduce all of their students and give you a quick synopsis of what their time in Texas entailed. So our first school and our first three teams, Gordon Parks Academy and Corey McCracken. If all of our GPA students want to come up, we had three teams qualify from Gordon Parks Academy.
Okay, I must have missed one when I sent this into them because we actually had four teams, President Reeser and board members and Dr. Thompson. We did have four teams that qualified. Just a quick synopsis of what a VEX Robotics Tournament looks like. When we went down to Worlds, each of these, each of the kids participated in 10 qualifying matches where they were split into seven, 508 teams were split into seven different divisions, and they competed in 10 matches within their division. Pool play style, similar to most tournaments, softball tournaments, volleyball tournaments that you might have. And our kids did extremely well. Our 71610A team, which I must have missed here on the list, finished with our best record of 6-3-1, was ranked 26th out of the 72 teams in each division. Our team 71610X Speedsters with Dom Williams and Ben Nance, who are both here with us, as well as Jason Rogers and Gabe Gaines, who is also here with us, they finished with a 4-6 record, but still qualified them about 44th in their division. 71610C are Mean Machines, oh, I see what happened, of Gabe Nance, who is here, Ethan Hahn and Ashton Richards. They struggled a little bit and they finished with a 4-6 record. Still qualified them in the top 50 in their division out of 70 again. And then our two girls and a robot, Miranda King and Tyann Scott, who unfortunately are eighth graders, and I won't have them again next year, they finished with a 5-5 record, but they did enough throughout those qualification round, matches, to impress a team of young ladies from Australia. And the team from Australia actually selected our girls to go on to play in the elimination rounds, which is elimination rounds for each division, and that is a 16-alliance, single elimination bracket, and they took the number two team, number two seeded team in their division to the brink. It was very good. And two other shout outs, I'd like to, part of that competition is a skills competition where they take their robot and instead of being two-on-two on the field, they go participate on the field by themselves with their robot, single robot driving, single robot programming for one minute apiece, and they combine those scores. And out of 508 teams, our team of 71610X Speedsters of Dom, Gabe, and Ben Nance, who are here with us, they were able to amass a score of, I think it was 430 points, which ranked them 49th at the World Championships. And that, and that's out of all 508 teams, which was very impressive. And then also 71610C, which was driven by Gabe Nance, who is here with us. Do you remember what your score was? I don't remember either, but I do remember it being 31st ranked team out of 508 in the world that were there, that just blew our minds, so. I just, I know on behalf of the other robotics coaches, I know I'd like to throw a big shout out and thank you to you all for allowing us to go in the secondary office for all of their support and helping us make that trip come true. I know a few of our kids, it was even their first time leaving the state of Kansas, so it was a lot of fun for them to see all of the different cultures and be able to experience that. So thank you, guys.
If you announce their name, each one, in the microphone.
You bet. Okay. So our three girls, or two girls and a robot, excuse me, were Tyann Scott and Miranda King. Our 71610X Speedsters was Dom Williams, Gabriel Gaines, Jason Rogers, who is not here, and And then 71610C Mean Machine, Gabe Nance, and then Ethan Hahn and Ashton Richard, who And then I'll figure out the other, what happened with the other ones for 71610A. Thank you.
Our next school is Allison Middle School and Mr. Steve Smith and his two teams that qualified for the National Championships.
Well, we were very pleased this year. We had five teams, and it was technically only our second year at Allison to have a robotics team that competed in the VEX competitions. We had all five of our teams from Allison qualify for state, and as a result of all five going to state, then two of them continued on to Worlds, and we were very thrilled with that. Our girl, all-girls team of Miriam Brown, Brianna Hupick, Sophie Lungwitz, and Kira Rowland, they basically turned out in their division of 72 teams, 65th position with a record of 2 and 8. So we said when we went, our goal was, let's win at least one of our rounds, and they doubled that, so that was great. And then our boys team of Talin Bogart, Caleb Gigan, Noah Gigan, and Chal Rude, they scored 38th out of their 72 teams in their division with a record of 5 and 5. So they did exceptionally well, and we're very proud of them. So for your certificates, we have Talin Bogart and Caleb Gigan, Noah Gigan, and Chal Then we have for our girls team, Miriam Brown, Brianna Hupick, Sophie Lungwitz, and Kira Rowland, who were not able to be here tonight, but thank you very much for your support.
And our final school that qualified is Robinson Middle School, and their sponsor is Kristin Shelton. Is she here? Okay. I don't have any specifics. Robinson team, can you guys tell me how you did? Oh, thank you, Corey, for checking it out. Are there any Robinson students here? There are not. Okay. We will get this to them for this evening. And I'll ask Kristin what happened when, when they were there, because I'm waiting in anticipation as well. I would also like to acknowledge all of the families of our students, so if you're a family of one of our qualifiers, if you could just stand and we could recognize you for all of the work you've done. It's pretty incredible that Wichita Public Schools was able to have seven total teams in a national competition in Texas, and we're looking forward to set aside some money in the secondary office to send some more teams next year, so it, we're setting it aside. I've already got robotics names on it. Make sure we have some national qualifiers for next year. So thank you all very much. The Robinson RAM team finished 56th with a record of 4 and 6.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, and I appreciate Mr. Smith mentioning that at Allison, that was only their second year. I remember visiting the school and we were just getting it started, and two years, and we're already at a national championship, so, and good showing, so great job. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, service employees international.
Good evening, board members, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. One of the things that I think everybody is excited about is this first week of June, and actually, second week of June, or third, and they're actually able to take a breath and relieve themselves for the summer, and people have been kind of waiting for that break. So we appreciate the contracts passing last month, and we also look forward to the opportunity to discuss the behavior of students towards staff this summer and the committee that you guys have decided that we could form to handle that stuff. I think that's very important, and we appreciate your acknowledgement of that. And I wanted to thank Board Member Stabler for inviting me to the banquet that you had last evening at North High. I'm sorry I was unable to make it, but I'd love to hear how it went, and I'm glad you guys had an opportunity to put that on, so. And that's really most of our report for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Esau. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Brent.
All right. Thank you, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. It's a pleasure to see you during the summer. As Esau mentioned, you know, students and staff alike are finding some time to, you know, relax a bit, take vacations. Our educators are doing conferences, attending workshops, things like that, you know, the things we have to do to keep our license up and, and, you know, keep, keep sharp at our craft. I do, I do think we have to talk about the fact, though, that, that our hearts were broken recently by the terrible crime committed in Uvalde, Texas. The loss of those children and educators is devastating, and we cannot imagine what their families are going through. In the wake of such a terrible, senseless act of violence, we cannot help but think about our own vulnerabilities. I am grateful that most everywhere I go in the school district, I must buzz in, identify myself, and pass through a supervised area before I have entry to the building. And we just want to ensure that that is the case in all of our school buildings across the district. And we also want to make sure that, that all of our classrooms and office spaces in schools are able to be secured from the inside, if that were ever to be, to be necessary. So, it's a bittersweet address in the middle of the summer, but we thank you for your time and consideration for the light and the heavier matters. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, public communications.
I do not see anyone registered tonight, so we'll go on to the next item. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, operations, transportation department overview.
I'll have the superintendent introduce the topic, and then we'll have a presentation on our transportation department overview.
I just want to introduce my colleagues here tonight, and we are actually just going to do a transportation department overview tonight, to give everybody an opportunity to learn more about how transportation works, give a little bit of statistics about how many kids we serve and kind of the, the work that we've done this year, and then talk a little bit about what's next, because we know that there's some additional work that we need, we'll be working on. When the school year starts back up in the fall, we'll be having some opportunities for some engagement of our community and folks around to support us as we think about how we continue to make things better in our district in regards to transportation. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. I'm Fabian Armendaros, I'm the Division Director of Operations, and as Dr. Thompson mentioned just a little bit ago, tonight's purpose, as we know, we have some new board members, and there are some consent items as part of the consent agenda today that deal with transportation. So we felt it was a proper time for us to come in and give you a little bit of what we call a Transportation 101, or kind of the basics about transportation. It is a very complicated operation that has very many moving parts, and so we'll try our best to simplify it and to hopefully make it understandable. Today's agenda is going to be divided into four parts. We're going to talk a little bit about the basics, then we're going to talk about some of the current projects that are currently happening in transportation, we're going to review a couple of policies, and then after that, we'll talk about challenges and future considerations. With me tonight, I have Lisa Riveros, who is our Director of Transportation and is doing a phenomenal job, leading what is one of the most complicated operations in our entire system, and she is going to be running us through the majority of the presentation, so Lisa.
Thank you, Fabian. Good evening. All right, so the first thing that I'll discuss tonight is the basics of how our transportation department works. We ensure the safe transportation of around 16,000 students, so about one in every three of our students are on a bus here at Wichita Public Schools. In 2011, we had the most number of buses on our road at any given time, and that was right around 531. This past school year, we've had the least amount, and with our yellow buses, we had 355 on the road at a given time, with 362 total routes this past year. And that's for a variety of reasons why we were so low this past year, that we'll get into a little bit further in a little bit. But basically, what we have in Wichita Public Schools is called a three-tier system. We know that our schools start at 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock, and 9 o'clock, and so with that, a school bus can drive kids at each of those three times. Our goal is to make sure, or do the best that we can to balance that, so we have equal number of bus routes at each given time. And there's a lot of benefits to that goal. One is that a bus driver can have full-time hours, but another is, is that those buses are efficiently used, they're getting the most number of kids with the least number of assets to where they need to go. If we move on to the next slide, we have lots of different reasons why we transport students in Wichita Public Schools. And what I have here is a comparison of what we did this past school year, and then what we did as a base year of 2016-17. There's really no rhyme or reason to picking 2016-17, other than it was before the pandemic and just kind of a good base year to see. Keep in mind, as we go through these numbers, we've lost a little bit in enrollment in our school district, but it's interesting to see how they have changed in how we transported kids. We're still transporting about the same number of kids. We transport students for distance reasons, so if a child lives more than two and a half miles from the school they're assigned to, they generally get transportation, and we are serving right around 6,500 students for that reason. We also provide transportation for our IB programs, our Magnet programs, and included in this is our Early College Academy at Northwest. And those numbers have slightly decreased, but our enrollment, again, has slightly decreased. So we're transporting right around 4,000 students for that reason. Our hazardous numbers have increased significantly. We're looking at this past year, it transported nearly 2,000 kids for that reason, and, and it's because the growth in our city is in the areas where we have hazardous transportation. And these are kids who live less than two and a half from their school, but there's not a safe walking path. So right around CMA and Southeast and out at Isley, lots of growth there, so we're seeing more kids on buses there, and lots of growth with houses. We transport students to receive ESOL services, those numbers have stayed around the same, just under 1,000. And our space available is students who get a ride on a bus who don't otherwise qualify for a bus, but if we already have a bus stop that they're able to get to, they can hop on, no problem, we have, we have the room for them. And those numbers have decreased, and the reason why is because we just don't have enough room for them anymore. Remember, our total number of buses on the roads have gone down, so the total number of space for them have gone down as well. And next, our number of McKinney-Vento, which is our homeless students, and ESSA, which is our students who are in foster care, those numbers have, have gone up, and they've gone up since the pandemic. And we see we're transporting right around 400 kids back to their base schools, so wherever they move around in town, they get a bus ride back to their base schools in most cases. And then finally, students who have 504 services for ADA, we have rate around 31 kids getting transportation for that. And again, our numbers in transportation have stayed about the same year over year, rate at that 16,000 mark regardless of where our enrollment is. All right, so we have three different ways of transporting students in Wichita Public Schools, and I often get asked, do we transport our own, or how long has Wichita Public Schools been transporting students with contractors? And, and really, we've been a system that's always had contractors. All three of our contractors, which includes First Student, Wichita Transit, and Everdriven, have the same safety features. The drivers are absolutely trained to serve students. They're trained and background-checked at the highest level. Each of these vehicles have cameras on boards, able to monitor where they are at any given time using GPS. And so, they're all three really great systems. But our biggest contractor is First Student. I have two graphic displays there, and it can show just how many kids or how many routes we have with First Student. They're both the biggest display that you see up there. Wichita Transit partners with us as well, and we have about 821 high school students riding on Wichita Transit buses, and that's rate around seven runs or seven different Wichita Transit routes that they ride on. It costs about $2.30 a day for a student to ride Wichita Transit that the district does pay for in order to get those kids to and from school. And finally, a brand-new contractor this year is Everdriven, formerly known as ALC. We have about 18 riders at any given time using them, and often, we use Everdriven when students are far outside of their school boundaries, like the McKinney-Vento or ESSA or sometimes even special ed students. It's just a really great way to transport them from far distances and when they're hard to create a route out of them, and this uses passenger vehicles. Three or four, four passengers can sit in one of these vehicles at a time, and they're about $65 a run, and it's a very equivalent cost to what First Student would charge. All right, so again, First Student is our biggest transportation provider, and so a lot of the next data that I'm going to discuss is on First Student, because that's where a big portion of our budget for transportation goes to. This school year, a mini-bus costs rate around $300 a day, and this is one of the smaller buses that you see on the road. They fit a maximum of 24 students, and that's about $55,000 a year. A larger bus has a capacity of about 72 students, and that is $62,780 a year to run one of those buses. With First Student, we have variable costs for other runs that we have. If we do something in the middle of the day to transport students to and from college campuses or pre-K students, those are different costs, as well as aides are different costs that all go into our First Student contact, contract. For this upcoming school year, 2022-23, we are budgeted at $33,800,000 for First Student transportation. All right, and again, bus cost is directly related to how many buses that we have on the road at any given time, and so the big goal is to have a bus serve as many, as many buses serve three schools that we can in a single day. So, for this past school year, we had rate around 355 First Student routes, and that composed of 980 different groups of students. At 7:00 AM, we have 271 buses on the road at a given time, so we have some sitting buses at that time, because then we need to add more buses into the system for the eight o'clock start schools and the nine o'clock start schools. With our greatest number there, with this data display, was 357. So, if those were all even, that's where we get the most bang for our buck. All right, so what does a bus do in a day? And if we take a look, we have an animation here, and Patrick, if you'd assist me, we can kind of follow through this animation and see what a bus does. And if we move forward, it gets started to serve their 7:00 AM school. In this particular case, it starts kind of on the west side of our district and heads over to Brooks. A run should be about 40 minutes long. After that bus drops students off at Brooks, it will proceed on, if we proceed forward with the slide, and it will pick up some students for a special ed route for Marshall Middle School for kids that are assigned there. And then for the next tier, which should be 40 minutes as long as well, it'll serve its elementary school. And what is really interesting about this route is that the first bus group is a primarily general education group, the next group is a special needs group, and then finally, a general education group. So, we're able to take that one bus and use it as efficiently as possible based on geographically where it is. All right, so in the Transportation Department, we don't only have costs for the, the buses and the vehicles that are on the road, but also the fuel. The district is responsible for the fuel that goes into our First Student buses, and the reason why the district does it is that we, we receive a rebate as a school district for that fuel, so it's just the most cost-efficient way to do it. This past year, we have partnered with Mid-Kansas Co-op to monitor our current fuel tanks that are at the lots, and whenever those fuel tanks are getting low, they'll bring out a load of fuel, which is 7,500 gallons at a time, and they have done a fabulous job since you, the Board, have approved them coming on as being our partner, keeping those fuel tanks full and our buses full. We've had no issues. It's been absolutely fantastic. We pay for that fuel based on the OPUS or the market value of the fuel for that day. Because we buy it in bulk, the 7,500 gallons at once, we do pay a little bit less than what somebody may pay at QT or at the pumps. We averaged this past school year rate about $2.81 for our gasoline, and our vans and our mini-buses take gasoline. Our large buses require diesel fuel, and we've averaged around $3.24 a gallon for that. We started to see that spike in fuel costs in April, where we paid above $4 for both of those, just like we all have in our own personal vehicles. As we look forward to the next school year, I anticipate paying above $4 a gallon again, so we will see a price increase with fuel there. All right, so we have a lot of really great current projects that we're doing in transportation, and, and these are the pieces that I get super, super excited about, because these are the pieces that really are what are good for kids. So, if we move on to the next slide, our first one is, is we have first-view tracking on all of our First Student buses, and this means that our, our colleagues in the schools can take a look at where all their buses are at any given time, but our families can do it, too. Our families are able to track buses, and they know when their child is getting close to being delivered, and if they have their phone set up the right way, they can even get a text message when their child is delivered to the stop. So, it's just a really great way to monitor and provide an extra layer of safety for parents who do have bus riders. The next thing is that behavior management on buses has always been very, very important to the Wichita Public Schools Transportation Department. Over the last couple of years, we're using electronic communication tool called First Axe, and this provides drivers and monitors the ability to communicate with schools basically through email. They're able to write up behavior infractions, but also communicate about what's going on on the bus, and then schools are able to receive that and respond back to the driver. So, it's an awesome communication tool, but it also provides great behavior data for us, where we're able to pull out what type of things that we're seeing on the bus and, and be able to move forward in helping with our, our bus behavior that way. And other great projects that we have is our drivers have a tablet, which allows them to have turn-by-turn directions, which I know for all of us, it seems very, very comfortable because we may use our cell phones to get us to a new destination. On a bus, it's a little bit different, because buses can't go down dead-end streets and make a U-turn like we can make a U-turn. So, this is technology that's really unique to Wichita and really great, where our drivers can put in, they can grab a, a bus route over the, if they're not at the lot, put it into their tablet and get up and get going right there and right then. So, it's really great. And the final current project that we have going on right now is called First Serves, and First Serves is a comprehensive SPED program, but it's more than just a program. It's more or less a culture of doing everything that we can for all kids to make sure that they're successful on the bus. I have some pictures there. We have buses here with ramps to get into the bus, so students who struggle navigating stairs can independently potentially navigate a ramp bus. That's not all of our buses, but we do have some with ramps. I have in a photo here a bag. Our buses provide individualized tools onboard for kids, where they can have different things in the bag, like fidgets or things to help them or things to keep them occupied. We do lots and lots of training. I have a picture of the Rage Cycle. Our drivers and monitors love training, and they just do so well on learning so much about kids and best practices. We have built-in car seats, and we also have input forms on our students, where when the new drivers for summer school, when they just started, they were able to get information about their bus riders before they ever got to meet them, things like what do they like or how can they best serve them, even right down to their favorite type of animal. So, they were able to build that relationship from day one. And again, these current projects are just really exciting for me. Next, we'll talk about the transportation policies and just a really brief overview of them. The transportation policies live in the 7300. We have all these reasons for why we transport students, and that's in Policy 7300. We have also recommending changes to the transportation system, which is at 7302. The ins and outs of Special Education Transportation is in a policy as well, along with the discipline we talked about. Transporting non-reimbursable students are those 600 and so kids who don't necessarily qualify for a bus, but we have space for them. There's a policy around that. A policy for transporting students who are in athletics after school, we're able to get them to and from the school, to and from their practices and home. And then finally, our hazardous policy. Our hazardous policy saw changes in 2016, which is a big reason why we saw such a big reduction in buses at that point. The rest of the policies have not changed since the late 1990s. All right, so with our policies, let's talk a little bit about 7300, which is who we transport, and there's a data display, which is from the beginning of the slideshow, and the numbers of who we transport. First things first, we transport students who live two and a half miles or further from school. We also transport, according integration, we transport for special education, and then also, we talk about the, the hazardous reasons if there's not a safe walk path. Next, the transportation policy also indicates a criteria for bus stops, for where bus stops are located. An elementary student has a bus stop. It could be very close to their home as far as two blocks away, and our middle and high school students have bus stops within four blocks of their home. And again, the, the last revision to this policy was in 1999. There are portions of the policy that we no longer practice each and every day. We have, there's a state statute that requires who a school district should transport, and that state trans, that state statute compared to Policy 7300 are outlined here. According to the state statute, students only need transportation if they live outside of the municipality in which the school is located. So, we have a student who lives in the city of Ketchikan, but attends, but they're within the school district boundaries, they would receive transportation is what that says. Our school, our, any district receives reimbursement in the state of Kansas for students who live two and a half miles or more from their school. Therefore, that's who we provide transportation to. Next, I'm going to pass it on to Fabian again to go over our current challenges and future considerations. Thank you for your time.
Ernestine, hang on.
What kind of students are the non, where it says the non-reimbursable? Who would those be?
Thank you for asking about non-reimbursable students. Those are the ones who maybe live 2.4 miles, but we have a bus stop that's close. They can get on to that same bus stop, so it's our space-available students. Thank you.
Cheryl?
My question is on your last slide that, well, actually, it was Slide 15, where you talk about portions of the policy are obsolete. Are you in the process of revising that policy to bring it back to us? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, Lisa's amazing. I will tell you, I ran that department prior to her, and the challenges that she's faced being in this position compared to the ones that I faced are far above and beyond. I mean, she's, she's handled it with grace, and the way that, I, I call her the parent whisperer sometimes because of the, the amount of grace that she deals with parents. Sometimes that come to her escalated because of one reason or another. Again, dealing, when you're talking about a system that is stretched to the max when you're 77 buses short than from where you should be operating, it's pretty amazing the amount, the work that she and, and her team do to, to help us keep going. So, again, she's, she's pretty incredible, and we're pretty blessed to have her. As, as we talk about the challenges and future considerations, obviously, the first challenge that we see on here is the driver shortage. As you, as, as mentioned, compared to five years ago, we're 77, we're running 77 fewer buses than we have in years past, and we are still transporting the same number of students. So, they, we've had to come up with some creative solutions in order for us to address this driver shortage, including sometimes limiting the number of field trips, limiting the time of the day when field trips can happen, because we need those buses to transport students to school. Required consolidated bus runs, where in the past, we had a 40-minute maximum. Now, if possible, sometimes we're stretching certain buses to 50 minutes, 55 minutes, which isn't ideal, and as, as that parentheses there has it is, is what's efficient, what's best for kids. And that's really kind of the balance that we're teetering every day is, we understand that sometimes the most efficient pieces that we're doing are not what's best for kids, but it is the only way that we, we have to transport students. And so, that's a, a constant juggle, struggle that, that, that we're dealing with on a daily basis. The other part is limited options for pairings, particularly because of our magnet transportation or special education programs, AAA choice. Some of those pieces really complicate things, where people see a bus with three students running down the road, they don't realize that that bus is coming from the west side of town, heading to the east side of town, and we only have enough time to do, you know, three stops. And so, some of those, it, it complicates it when we're talking about a magnet system that, that has opened from one side of the city to the other, and sometimes it creates challenges. We still have 24 schools with hazardous areas and hazardous boundaries, and as we mentioned, there's, we're going to, we're going to be looking at some things in the future, but there are districts that have done away with hazardous transportation altogether. When we're looking at the growth in our city that's happening, when we talk about the fact that every single student that attends Southeast High School or every single student that attends Krista McAuliffe Academy qualifies for transportation because there are no ways to get to school, that certainly creates our share of challenges in those areas. Bell times are also an issue. As we mentioned earlier, the, the, the most efficient way for a system to ride is if the same buses are being occupied at seven o'clock, at eight o'clock, and at nine o'clock. We know that we're sitting on 86, 86 buses available at seven o'clock, but it takes us back to the question of, is what's efficient, what's most efficient, what's best for kids? Yeah, you could move bell times and move some schools to seven o'clock, and they can start at seven o'clock, but is it what's best for a kindergartner to be waiting at a bus stop at 6:30 in the morning or 6:45 when it's dark? And so, those are the type of things that we need to balance when it comes to this. And the last piece that's not listed here is cost. We have seen the cost of our Transportation Department increase significantly. As you saw the cost earlier per bus, you know, that $62,000 a year for a large bus, $55,000 a year for a mini-bus. Back when I first came into transportation in 2011, the cost for a mini-bus was $34,000, and the cost for a large bus was $39,000. So, it's been a significant increase, and truthfully, in many ways, we benefited from the driver shortage because there's less buses on the road and we're paying for less buses. But at some point down the line, we're going to have to start looking at some cost reductions within transportation, because we just don't have the funding for it, and so we're going to have to be looking at some pieces here in the near future. So, again, as, as we look at this system, what we value in transportation as a system, and I put all these different factors up here for you, because it's important for you to know that these are the pieces that as we get a committee together, and we will get a committee together, to look at how we can reduce costs. At this point, the system is stretched as, as max as possible. It's going to involve some policy changes, and that's part of the reason why we went over those policy changes earlier, because policy changes have to come through you. And so, we'll be bringing you in the next year or so, some ideas of how we can reduce transportation costs, but likely, those are going to involve students losing transportation. So, what do you value in a system? Is it a kid walking two or four blocks to a Is it a kid walking two or four blocks to a bus stop? Do we stretch that further? Is the two and a half mile where we want to do it, the way that we want to operate? Do we want our, do we want to fill up those, those empty buses at 7:00 AM? Do we want to move bell times for us to be able to fill up those buses at 7:00 AM? So all of these pieces, ELL busing, AAA choice, all of those things are things that are adding cost into the system. And they're policy pieces that again, may come to you down the line as a way for us to reduce costs for transportation. So we just want, we just want you to be mindful of that. And again, so as we're looking then at, to wrap up at future considerations, we have consent items in tonight's BOE agenda that are for your recommendations, so we, we hope you will approve those. We will have a Transportation Policies and Procedures Committee that Lisa will put together, that will, will be meeting throughout this fall, with the goal of coming back to you with a presentation and a report in the spring about ways that we could potentially look at reducing costs in transportation. We're also doing a comprehensive policy review, and as a matter of fact, we already have policy recommendations that we're ready to bring forward. But because we have this committee going, we want to make sure that we process those, those potential changes through that committee, so that way we're not coming to you twice. And so we will be doing that, that work conjunctly. And then we'll also continue to explore electrification. We understand that that is an important part of our community. And so we continue to explore grants and other opportunities out there. Electrification costs money. And obviously, when we're talking about a system that's already stretched, we're gonna have to look for outside sources to support those types of initiatives, which we are working with our contractor to be able to, to fund. So again, a big thank you to you, and at this point, I think we're open for questions, if you have any more.
Ernestine.
On that last about electrification, are there companies that are making electrical school buses?
Yes, there are. They are significantly more expensive and because, and not only that, but they, there's also an infrastructure piece tied to it. In order for those buses to be able to be charged, there needs to be a significant amount of work done on those bus lots. Well, right now, our contractor, because we have contracted services, is renting those properties. And so are you gonna invest into those infrastructure pieces when, when they're not guaranteed that they're gonna be staying there and that the bus lot locations are gonna remain there? And so there, it's, it's a complicated piece for us to move in that direction. Because, because we have contracted services, it gets even more complicated. I will tell you that First Student has worked in other states where they've been able to ring in a few buses with electrification. But again, a lot of it is depending on what Kansas makes available, and also what Kansas makes available for districts like ours that have contracted services where we don't own the buses.
Who does the electrification? Does the contract company do it, or does the school district do that?
It would have to work through the contract company, because they own the buses and they also rent the bus lots.
So we wouldn't set up places for them to plug in, so to speak?
No, though, all of that would happen in the bus lot. And again, it's, it gets very complicated, because those, those batteries also have a certain cycle of power. And because we run a triple-tiered system, our buses are on the road probably three to four hours again in, in the morning, and then three to four hours in the afternoon. And so a bus would need to hold their charge that entire time in order for us to be able. So again, there's a lot of pieces that we are talking through and we're exploring with our contractor, and we've had a few meetings on. But again, it, I just wanted to let you know that we continue to explore those possibilities as we move.
Hazel.
Yes, on slide 18, where it says, under current challenges, it says, still have 24 schools with hazardous areas. What does that mean?
Okay, by policy, there, we have a hazardous policy. And so, for example, like Southeast High School, when you think about their location, there is no walk path for those kids to get to school. There's no sidewalks, the, the speed limits are long, there's no pedestrian controlled crosswalks. There is a policy that dictates, gives the criteria for how students that live under two and a half miles from the school would qualify for transportation based on that hazardous policy. And we have 24 schools right now that have a portion or an entire school that qualifies for transportation, because there is no safe way based on that policy for students to get to school.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
No problem. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to, to stand in front of you and present. We, we understand that it's a complicated operation, and sometimes, again, when people see buses on the road, they make assumptions, so we wanted to give an opportunity to explain. Again, I want to thank Lisa Riveros and her team, as well as our partners at First Student, for the amazing job that they've done this year managing, in spite of the consequences and part of the challenges that we've had due to the driver shortage. So, thank you all.
Alicia.
I just also want to make sure that we give a shout out to the City of Wichita, because they have been amazing. When we started this journey of having the shortages in the bus, with our bus drivers, they stepped up to the plate, the City of Wichita did, and, and provided us a great option for our kids. And it has been a great partnership. So I don't, I would be remiss if we did not thank the City of Wichita.
And thank you for that, Dr. Thompson, because we've also, they've also done some, some special things for us and worked with us on some high-need areas that we've had. So they've been, they've been a phenomenal partner to us. Thank you.
So, Fabian, if I was just to summarize, tonight, we received a Transportation 101. We will be setting up a committee to review all transportation issues, specifically in the area of policies. And I'm assuming the first policies you'll kind of look at is wherever we could save some money. And then you will bring, if you do come across any policies that would be beneficial to us, you'll bring those to us in the spring of '23. Is that a decent summary?
That, that is correct. Again, some of it is gonna be driven by your directives and, and where you want us to go. So if, if you want the committee to focus on cost savings, that's, that's what the committee will focus on. Again, knowing fully well that the system is already stretched. So any cost savings are likely gonna mean that students are gonna lose transportation. So again, some of that is gonna be driven by you and what you want this committee to bring back to you.
I appreciate you clarifying that. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We appreciate this report. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Ernestine, any consent items to pull?
I have nothing to pull.
Cheryl.
I have nothing to pull this evening, thank you.
I have no consent items to pull. Julie.
Yeah, I'd like to pull C2 and E5.
I'm writing these down now. I'm, I, it take, it took me for a while, but I finally figured out a system. So Julie's pulling C2 and E5.
Correct.
Thank you. Kathy.
D1.
Kathy, D1. Hazel.
A19.
Hazel, A.
19.
19. Thank you. I move, we adopt the consent agenda, except for items C2, E5, D1, and A19. Is there a second?
I second it.
Moved by Stan Reiser, seconded by Hazel to adopt a consent agenda, except for C2, E5, D1, and A19. All those in favor, raise your hand.
I have a question, President.
Yes, Julie.
I'm, I'm not sure what A19 is. Because where I see under As, we only go through A5.
E19.
E19, sorry.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, the motion is, I will amend my motion to adopt the consent agenda, except for C2, E5, D1, and E19. Good catch, Julie. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. Okay, first item is C2. Julie pulled that item. Go ahead, Julie.
Yes, Superintendent Thompson, I know we've discussed this project in the past, the Science Wing at East High. We, in the past, approved utilizing a construction manager at risk delivery method, and then approved McCongord and Construction to be that construction manager at risk on our behalf. And I know tonight, we're approving some materials, trying to get these materials purchased so that they're available when we get to that portion on the work. I think that's very smart, that they're thinking ahead and that we have this item before us tonight. But I'd just like an update relative to the overall project and the overall timeframe, and if we are gonna be able to be complete as we had originally planned. Just, just kind of some of that review on the overall progress.
Thank you very much for that. I'm gonna make sure that the person who is in charge of that can answer all of those questions. Mr. Luke Newman.
All right, well, good evening, and thanks for the question. To answer your question quite simply, yes, we are on track to, to finish on time. The whole reason for the board agenda item tonight is to make sure that we, that we do finish on time. And so the advantage of, of going with the CM at risk delivery method, one of the many advantages is that we're able to collaborate with the contractor early on. And in this instance, they recommended, because of long lead time issues that we're dealing with in the market, they recommended that we bring on the roofing package and order the HVAC materials early in order to make sure that those don't create a hindrance for us on the schedule and potentially delay us from hitting our, our completion date. So this is gonna benefit us, keep us on track. And then we are, we are still on track. We actually received our 100% design documents today for the whole thing. So we are on track to bring the final GMP package to you for approval next month. And then we will be ready to roll. So should start seeing some, some work here, starting real soon out there.
Yeah, thank you for that update. And I would like to make a motion that we approve these early bid packages for roofing and HVAC equipment at the East High Science Wing project.
I think I heard Cheryl first, but it moved by Julie and seconded by Cheryl to approve C2, the East High Science Wing project, early bid packages. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. And I would like to thank the board for continuing to be committed to preserve, to preserving our historically significant architecture in our school system. Thank you. Next item is E5, also with Julie.
Yes, and on this item, the, the item indicates that, that we just have some open vacancies in our custodial department, and that's why we're utilizing this contracted work. But I just want to, want to confirm that there isn't an, an intent to move to a contracted custodial department in lieu of having our own in-house staff, because of the fact that I worked with that department during my career. I just, there are a lot of advantages to having in-house staff primarily for our custodial work. I do understand if we have vacancies that we can't fill, we've got to keep our buildings clean, obviously. And so this supplemental contractor utilizes that, but I do just want to confirm that this is a temporary solution in a, in a, in a time that we can't hire enough staff and not an intention to move to contracted services.
That is why we were very specific of what we said in this board agenda item. It says specifically, "The service is needed temporarily due to the difficulty the district has had with filling its open vacancies in the custodial department."
Excellent. Okay, well, again, I, oh, Ernest.
Ernestine.
What is the beginning salary for someone just starting in, as a custodian? Maybe we could advertise that and some people would come and take some of those jobs.
My team, we don't, at this point, we have, we don't know exactly what that starting salary is. Everybody's going, oh, I don't know. So, but if we, we will, but we do advertise, very much so. And we're at every job fair and every workforce alliance, but if there's anyone out there that's interested in that, please call our offices here in the Wichita Public Schools, and we would be happy to walk you through and answer any questions you have about being a custodian.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve, yes, E5, custodial services.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Ernestine. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero.
And, and Alicia, can I ask just another question? Is this contractor by chance, Luke? Do they happen to be a minority contractor?
I believe they are.
Yeah, I, that's, I, that's awesome, because.
I think you need to repeat what you just asked and what he said, so that the people in the audience.
Yes, my question was, was the contractor that we're approving, Harris Dream Clean LLC, a minority contractor? A lot of times, minority contractors aren't available for some of the larger projects. And so to be able to use, the, the, the smaller contractors are an opportunity for, because there are minority contractors available to bid on those. And of course, we take low bid, so it's not a guarantee, but that, that is just a nice additional benefit that this, that this is a minority contractor, because I know we're always trying to, to have the opportunity to work with minority contractors when we can. So, just, just another perk.
Thank you, Julie. Next item is D1. Kathy.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson, I need some understanding. As far as the ESOL, the endorsement program, this is a wonderful opportunity for our educators to take advantage of. When and if they do, do they increase in their steps and in their pay?
The answer is yes.
Okay, and then I have one more. How many have signed up for this summer?
Okeydokey. Andy would have all those specificities, so if you would please come, my darling, and let us know how many teachers have signed up.
One example is, we have 70, roughly 70 participating this spring. They would have started last fall. Once this is approved, which it's new for us to approve this program at this time of the year, that often had happened later. Doing it now lets us recruit for the summer, but the, the program piece will begin in August, and they'll do, they have the option to do just back-to-back courses for two years, or they can take a fast track with Newman. But right now, that number is about 70.
Thank you. Wonderful. I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the programs and grants for the ESL.
I second it.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Cheryl to approve D1 ESOL endorsement program. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six, zero. The last item on the consent agenda is Hazel on E19. Go ahead, Hazel.
Yes, first of all, I would like to say that I'm very happy to see that this is on there and that work is being done towards improving this program. I would like to be reminded, I would like to remind everyone of the benefits our USD259 staff members receive through the Employment Assistance Program.
Thank you very much. President Reiser, Dr. Thompson, and board members, I'm Sean Hedsbit, Chief Human Resources Officer. And thank you for pulling this item tonight, as it's very important and near and dear to our department as well, to be able to continue to provide the employee assistance services, especially after two years that have been extremely difficult for a lot of people in a number of different ways. But these are the supports that we want to continue to be able to provide to employees. And through some ESSER funds, you all have allowed us to buy up this program to be a much richer benefit than it would normally be by an extended contract. So I'm gonna turn it over to my department's subject matter expert, Danielle Detmer, who's on the front lines of this benefit each and every day to talk to you about the enhanced services.
Welcome, Danielle.
Thank you. Thank you. And I also want to give a shout out to Bonnie Burkhardt, who is the supervisor of employee health, who is actually directly overseeing this program, a role I had in the past. I'm always anxious to discuss this and give a plug to it whenever possible. I truly believe we have to be champions for each other for mental health. So I am glad to provide an overview of the program and give you a little more specifics, and then you can ask me any additional questions you have. This is our second year going into. you can ask me any additional questions you have. This is our second year going into ComPsych, our new EAP provider. And as Sean mentioned, we did buy up because of the mental health concerns brought about by the pandemic. Instead of six sessions, which we had per person in the past, now we have 10 sessions per person. And those can be accessed in person, online, over the phone, or through text therapy. And it's not just available for our employees, but anybody in their household, even if they're not related. So it could be a roommate or an unmarried partner as well. And that is available whether you're a benefited employee or on the health plan or not. It's all employees for USD 259. In addition to those therapy services, we also have a financial wellness package called Wealth Source, where you can get online and fill out a personal budget or your personal financial goals, because financial well-being is a part of our overall well-being, and it can kind of set you up at a self-paced program to work on your financial goals. In addition, we have something called CCBT, which stands for Computer Cognitive Behavioral Therapy, which is a therapy program that you can do completely online at your own pace if you're not comfortable doing face-to-face or vocally with a therapist, and you just kind of want to do it behind a screen from the comfort of anywhere. You know, your car when you're sitting at lunch, at home, from wherever. So you have a lot of different options to kind of customize for yourself. In addition to those different options, there are other things that just help you balance your life. We call work-life balance options. So if you're looking to plan a trip, elder care, pet care, wanting to write a will, wanting advice about a divorce, they provide all kinds of services like that as well. You can either talk to somebody on the phone about that, or you can send them an email with your list of needs, and they'll provide a very extensive advice back to you. I've used the service myself. I've used it for my family. I can't say enough good things about it. Bonnie Burkhardt and I had the chance to do a strategic plan visit with Dr. Thompson not that long ago. It's out there on the web if you want to check it out, where we were interviewed a little bit more about the program. You can also check it out on Employee Benefits website at USD259.org. And you can always call Employee Benefits for more information too at 973-4581. And I say all that in case any employees are watching and just want a reminder. We try to plug this in our Employee Benefits newsletter as often as we can, but we're also working on a, like a five-by-seven postcard that will be mailed to people's homes or delivered to sites in August as we return to school, just as a reminder for all employees. And the last but not least, I wanted to mention that our usage rate is about twice the national average. So we definitely do have people using the program, but we would always like to see that further escalate, just to know people are getting the whole thing.
Kathy?
Thank you for that. Substitute teachers are employees, but they do not reap the benefits that the other employees do. Would this be offered to them?
It is for all employees, so this is something that they could access as well.
Even though they do not have other benefits.
Correct.
With the district. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alicia?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thought you. If they don't have any other questions, I was just going to thank the board on behalf of the employees for providing this opportunity to us and continuing to keep us focused in on this important topic, and that's to keep our employees and their families healthy with this program. We'll continue to do all we can to advertise and make folks continue to be aware of what's going on. And if you have not seen the YouTube video, I'll send it to you, but we try to, we try our very best to highlight this and send this to every employee in the district and talk about this important topic and the benefits that we have, and that it's totally cool to use the program. So I just wanted to thank the board on behalf of all of the employees for allowing us this opportunity.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you as well for all your hard work and keeping up on everything that's going on. And I know that you're, the employees are very happy with us as well. So in saying that, I would like to make a motion to pass Employees Assistance Program.
I second it.
Moved by Hazel and seconded by Kathy to approve consent item E19, our EAP program. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Finance, Budget Report.
Dr. Thompson, if you'd like to introduce the topic again.
Thank you for being here. We have a pretty lengthy budget presentation this evening. It is chunked into several different sections. So again, if you have questions along the way, I'm sure we can stop at every junction to answer the questions for those, that particular chunk of information, and then we'll move to the next. Is that okay with you? All right.
Perfect.
So without further ado, Ms. Willis.
Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. Superintendent Thompson is absolutely correct. We do have three very important topics to discuss related to the budget tonight. And I apologize, I talk with my hands. I've noticed that as I watch the replays. And now that I'm not advancing my own slides, I may be flailing around, so I'm going to have to be really cognizant of that. Tonight, we're going to talk about the revenue neutral rate. We are going to talk about some changes in the statutory requirements that the board must follow as it passes this year's budget. And we're going to talk about the most latest updates related to the ESER federal relief funding related to COVID. So those are the heavy lifts we're going to start on tonight. And we're going to first remind the board of our budget timeline. We started back in February, bringing to the board some information related to the budget. We've had several presentations since that date. We are now to the point where we are looking at our revenue neutral rate decision as we approach our fiscal year end. And then we get into a first look at the budget in July, and then our notice of hearing and adoption in August.
Susan, I apologize. Does everyone have the presentation? I somehow have lost mine. Am I the only one that didn't have one? Okay.
I do have additional copies if we need it.
Yeah. Thank you, Susan. Sorry about that.
So let's talk a little bit about the definition of this revenue neutral rate, especially for our new board members, who this is the first time that they will have addressed this particular issue related to the budget. When we're talking about a mill levy, we're talking about the tax rate that is applied to the assessed value of property. So if you are a homeowner and you pay property taxes, it's because some facet of government has assessed a mill levy on your property. And that generates local revenues for school districts, for cities, and for counties. A year ago, the state legislature passed a rule that you have to go to the voters and tell them you are going to exceed what they called a revenue neutral rate. If you are going to exceed the amount of money, not the mill levy, but the amount of money that you raised in the previous year, then you have to go tell the taxpayer. So it's, revenue neutral means kind of what it says, which is as long as your dollars are the same, you are revenue neutral, and you don't have to inform your taxpayer that you are basically capturing revenue growth related to increased property tax valuations. Now, that is a challenge, depending on the type of mill levy we're talking about. And sometimes the words are a little bit more difficult. So I want to walk through one specific example of what a, what the difference is on revenue neutral rate versus assessing a mill levy in a typical fund. And I'm using capital outlay as my example. So if, in fiscal year '22, the capital outlay total assessed valuation was $3.15 billion in Cedric County. Assessing the kind of the max in capital outlay, which was just, it's eight mills, but in this case, it was, it came in calculated at 7.995 mills, that raised $25.16 million of taxes. Next year, property taxes, property valuations have gone up. If you've received your tax notice, you know this, because your property value most likely went up as well. In Cedric County, the overall property increase was about 6.7%. So that $3.35 billion, if we assess the same number of mills, that raises $26.77 million of taxes, an increase of 1.6 million and change. If we stay revenue neutral, which means we can only raise the same $25.16 million next year that we raised this year, we would reduce the capital outlay mill levy from the 7.995 mills down to 7.518 mills. So you can see the little, the little red bracket. The top shows you that the mill levy stays the same, and the district is able to capture some of that revenue, that property tax growth. We're capturing some of that to help us hedge inflation, try to address those things in capital outlay that we're behind on. The second example shows if you stay revenue neutral and only raise as much as you did this year. So I'm going to pause a minute to make sure that's clear to the board. The difference between if you assess the same mill levy raising more dollars or staying revenue neutral.
Thank you. I have different figures here.
Yes, that was from the early draft, and I did have a revised draft, and I can, I will grab those for you.
No, okay, as long as I understand that I was looking at the right page.
Yep. I have several drafts before I go final, because I'll check, recheck, triple-check. So, okay. So any other questions on kind of that sample illustration? Okay. Cedric County has provided us the actual figures, so I'm going to go through those in the three categories that we have to address from a revenue neutral decision point. The first one relates to the general fund, and really, there's no decision to make on the general fund, because by statute, that has to be assessed at 20 mills. So 20 mills last year raised $57.7 million of tax revenue that went to the state. For fiscal year '23, the same 20 mills will raise $61.6 million, or again, that 6.7% growth of almost $4 million that the state will then receive in increased revenues for next year. In fiscal year '22, legislative session, the legislature actually exempted the general fund, general fund from the revenue neutral publication rate rule. So they kind of exempted themselves. They can, they can exceed revenue neutral, and they don't have to go tell the taxpayer they're doing it. So we have to, and we will. And that's the next slide, which is related to the capital outlay. This is the same example I showed you earlier, just in a slightly different format. The fiscal year '22 budget, we assessed 7.995 mills, raising $25 million. For fiscal year '23, we are, we are proposing an eight-mill capital outlay mill levy to capture the full max mills that we can assess in this fund because of the reasons we just talked about. You saw a number of the capital outlay needs just in today's consent agenda, and obviously, you've seen those all year long. This $1.6 million increase that we are asking the board to concur with our recommendation will pay for the increased costs of technology, continuing our approach on deferred maintenance, and obviously hedging against the inflationary costs that we are seeing in all of our construction and repair type of expenditures. The other three mill levy that we assess, they're grouped, so they don't have to be reviewed individually. They are considered a group of other funds. In our case, we have three other mill levies. That's bond and interest, that's the supplemental general, and the special liability. For fiscal year '22, the total of those three funds, the mill levy, was 24.519 mills. If we were to stay revenue neutral, to raise the same $76.7 million as we did this year, that mill levy would reduce to 23.077 mills. We are proposing 20, and again, these are estimates at this point. This is just, this is what we think, where we think we're going to land. This could change slightly. But we are proposing that we are going to be at around 23.483. So we are not going to be revenue neutral, but we are going to come down in those funds. You can see the total fund with, dollar-wise, that we are suggesting, they will, we will drive 1.3, almost $1.4 million of additional revenue into those funds, but that's only 1.8% of the 6.7% property increase. So we are going to come down over a mill, most likely, when it's said and done overall, and it will be in these funds. So kind of putting that whole package together, you can see in the, in the far-left column of numbers where we finished in fiscal year '22. This was straight from the county documents. And our rough estimates going into fiscal year '23. So we are proposing that we overall decrease the mill levy from 52.535 to 51.483, staying at the eight mills in capital, but coming down in those other funds where we can. We actually may go up a little bit in special liability, but we'll come down on the LOB, we'll come down in bond and interest. And again, the general fund has to be 20 mills. The special liability, again, is going, we're proposing a small increase of about a quarter mill. Bond and interest will come down almost a half. We may have a little bit more wiggle room there. There's still a number of pieces of information we need before we finish out the fiscal year, so this, these numbers may change. When we tell the county what our plan is, as long as we don't exceed our, kind of our cap, and this is where we think that the highest we would be, most likely, we will come in even lower than 51.483. We can't go higher than that, though, once we publish. So I will stop, and we'll talk about this slide for a minute.
Ernestine?
Is it possible for you to translate that into, say, a $100,000 house, and how it would impact someone's taxes?
I can. So typically, a mill, one mill on a $100,000 house is about $12 to $13. So we're coming down a mill. We'll save the taxpayer $12 to $13, which doesn't sound like a lot. But again, if your house is $300,000 year over year over year, you will save some dollars. And again, one mill in this year, maybe not a lot of money, but you go back and look at the last seven to 10 years of our mill structure, you can see that we have been slowly and basically steadily decreasing the rate at least a little bit every single year. We, I think our high was in the 57, 58 range, if I'm recalling. That's testing my memory just a little bit. But we have purposely been trying to reduce that mill levy as much as we can over the, over the last five, seven, 10 years.
Thank you.
The other thing that's changed related to the mill levy, and it's in the small print up there. In the '22 legislative session, the residential exemption also increased. So on top of our mill levy reduction, the, instead of $20,000 being exempt for the 20 mills, they increased that to $40,000 of exemption for the general fund. So the taxpayer will also save $46 related to that additional exemption amount. So $46 plus our $12 to $13, there's a little bit of money there on a $100,000 home.
Thank you.
Additional questions related to our proposal? So what we're recommending tonight, well, first, let me give you the timeline. The timeline right now is by June 15th, and Cedric County made their deadline, they notified all school districts of where the rates were going to fall. And so all of the Cedric County school districts received that. I have now informed the board, and so by July 20th, we will need to notify Cedric County of our intent. So the next slide will tell you our recommendation. I don't necessarily need a formal vote or a formal resolution from the board, but if you don't like the recommendation, now is the time to have some discussion. If, I will also probably ask again on the 30th, especially since Ms. Albert is not available, to make sure there is no further issues, and then we'll go to the county. We'll notify the county clerk of our intent based on the numbers I just presented you. The county clerk then turns The county clerk then turns around and notifies the taxpayers of our intent related to the overall mill levy and those three areas. The district then will publish the notice of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate as part of our budgetary process. It will be part of our hearing, so not only will we have the hearing on the regular budget, but we have the hearing on the revenue neutral rate at the same time. So we can do both on the same night. If everything proceeds according to plan, then the board will then adopt the budget and we will have everything submitted to KSDE well in advance of the 9/20 due date and we'll have everything to the county by October 1st.
Stan?
Oh, I'm sorry, Cheryl?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the public is clear, so I'm going to repeat it one more time. We're really talking about with this discussion, we aren't going to be revenue neutral, but we are going to lower the mill levy.
That's correct.
So what comes out of the, of the homeowner's pocket is going to be less than it was last year.
Less related to the mill levy. Now, obviously if your property valuation goes up six or seven percent, you're most likely paying more taxes because of the valuation, but we're trying to come down on the mill levy so that we aren't capturing all of those dollars in addition to the valuation just being higher.
Yeah, so we're trying to help our taxpayers
Absolutely.
By reducing our mill levy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ernestine?
Is it appropriate that we have a motion tonight or shall we just say thank you very much?
Well, I, again, I was looking to see if there was any feedback from the board, if you wanted some additional information or if you were comfortable with us proceeding with the next slide, which is our recommendation of the, our intent to notify the county clerk that we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate in capital outlay by exercising the full authority of eight mills. So we will capture all growth in capital outlay. But for the other funds, which is bond and interest, special liability and the supplemental general fund, while we don't know a final answer yet, we intend to at least come down that one mill and change that we shared on the previous screen, we may be able to come down a little bit more, we won't be higher. So I will take objections or concerns with that recommendation.
Going to say we could make a motion that we recommend, that is, is that appropriate?
I don't need it
Okay.
Because there's no, there's no necessary
You just go.
Just direct, kind of direction as I move forward. Okay, hearing no objection to the plan, that will be my plan and I will proceed with staff.
We're happy.
Yes. Okay, totally unrelated topic, number two, and that is related to some conversation that we need to have around changes to Kansas statute 72 1163. This statute has been on the books for a while and it has required districts to do needs assessments as part of the budgetary process. Now, the district has done needs assessments of all kinds in various forms for years and we have had a process of a needs assessment related to budgetary needs for a long time, where schools, if they had a, a need for increased funds or a new position or whatever that need was, there was a request process and that would go to their principal, which would go to their assistant superintendent, which would then come for kind of an overall look in the budgetary process to make sure we had enough funding to address. Or if it was a long-term need, it was kind of on a list of long-term considerations. So we've had that process for years. What, the changes that were made in the legislative session in, in this past, this past spring, where they put some additional requirements on local boards related to this process. So the first one we're going to talk about are changes related to that needs assessment process. So the first, the first item is that, that you do them and you do them a little bit more formally and that once you get the data pulled together, that you must publish it on your website. And we will do so, and we are in the process of pulling all of that together and we will publish it to the website. We are also going to provide the board paper, a paper copy of each building's needs assessment because they are doing them individually. In addition, on the code 99, which is the form we put in the paper, when we do the notice of hearing that basically outlines the entire budget, we will include that the needs assessments are available at the district offices if anyone wants to come in and review those. So we'll include that. In the minutes of our adoption process in August, the minutes have to reflect that the needs assessments have been provided to the board, which we will have done so. The minutes need to address that the board evaluated those results and how those needs assessments are reflected in the budget. And we'll cover that with you most likely when we do the first look in July, so that when we get to the hearing and the adoption process, you will have those answers. But that, so those are additional requirements we have not had in the past, that's all new for this year. The second part of this particular statute that's changed is related to the board reviewing state assessments. Now, the board has reviewed state assessments, they are already published as part of the accountability reports on our website, so this isn't really a, a new process for the board, but it does formalize as part of the budget process, that the local boards must have reviewed state assessments as part of the budgetary process and in that review, we may have to document three things. We have to document the barriers that must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency above level two. We have to address any budgetary actions that should be taken to address and remove those barriers and we have to estimate the amount of time it will take for all students to achieve that proficiency above a level two. Now, the first, the first caveat is we're not going to be looking at the 21, 22 state assessments because they aren't done. So we are looking back a year at the 2021 state assessments. So we really won't have the most current picture, we'll have the, the 2021, which was also a year impacted by COVID, so we won't have even necessarily a, a full reflection of what all of our students would have tested. So I think that we need to keep that in mind. We don't know that we have even seen kind of the, the floor of how all of the students would have tested, that I would anticipate being the 22, the 21, 22 data. So just keep that in mind as we're giving you that information, that is basically last year's testing. The, the barriers and we will try to be, when we give you the information, we'll give you the needs assessments, we're going to give you the state assessments, we're going to have the, the staff's response to these three items so that you can look through that and, and add as you see fit. We are doing a number of things obviously to address the overall academic performance of students. You've heard a lot about it, we've talked a lot about those initiatives, some of which include our, the letters professional development, the standards reference grading process, restorative practices, a lot of the professional development that the board has approved is going right into these requirements. There are other barriers that students experience that probably we're not going to have too much ability to impact, but we're going to list them all so that we can address the ones that we can, that we have plans around, but also identify those that these are barriers that would be very difficult for districts from a budgetary perspective to overcome, so that it's a complete picture or as complete as we can get it. And then from a timing perspective, you know, we'll, we'll do the best that we can. We will certainly focus on what we think we can achieve in a, in a year, and I'm not talking what's going to be achieved on the 21, 22 that the tests we've already taken. We're talking about the following year, what actions that we anticipate seeing some results because we're going to be a year behind. I will also note that as we go through this process, it was an extremely tight timeline for schools to address these needs assessments when we give you this data. So it was not a perfect process year one. We probably gave schools two to three weeks to complete it, they would not have had time to go back to their various stakeholders for a lot of conversation, even though we have other data that we'll use as part of the budgetary process in this, in this formal needs assessment process, because KSDE was a little late in getting information out, we took some of their early drafts, put it together, sent it to principals and said, let's, let's try this first year to do the best that we can and then we'll improve upon the process for, on a go-forward basis. So I'm going to pause there to see if there are questions related to this change, these changes. Okay? So you will be getting a notebook most likely sometime during the week that will have all of the, the, the information we just outlined. You will have the ability to provide some feedback, certainly that meeting in July when we give you that first look, if you have, as you're marking and highlighting things in your notebook and you want to ask some questions, we should be able to address some of those issues at that time. And then we will have all those required assurances on all the appropriate documents so that we are buttoned up when we approve that budget in August. Okay?
Cheryl?
Yeah, I, I just, the three new requirements, we have actually gotten this kind of information before, it's just been in a different kind of way. And, and this is pulling it all together into one notebook, as you call it.
Yes.
Where we have this, the needs assessment from the schools and then we have the state assessment for each school tied to that, and then we have to say, how do we overcome what they're calling barriers?
Correct.
But barriers, we've been working with for a long time
Yes.
Trying to figure out how to overcome them.
Yes.
And although this is a new way for us to report it, it's not actually new information for this board, it's just presented in a different way.
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
I, I think that's very fair. This is not new work, this is, is really putting it into a, a digestible format for, you know, people who don't deal with school districts on a daily basis, it's a kind of a one-stop shop, pulling all the work that really you do all year into one, one process.
And all this information obviously will come to the board, but it'll also go up on our website
Yes.
So that parents and other people can look at it?
Yes.
And it'll be there school by school?
It will be.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, we are going to try to maybe put some, some information out there because those needs assessments will include, you know, what schools may consider to be an urgent need, so they need something this next year, but a lot of what you might see, especially if it's related to facilities, is probably a longer-term need. We wouldn't necessarily be able to address, we need a cafeteria addition because we're sharing our cafeteria and our gymnasium. That's, that's a much longer-term project, not necessarily something we can address in a, in a next budget year, so there will be kind of short-term solutions related to some of those challenges or barriers that they're address, bringing up, and there will be longer-term conversations. So again, same work we've always done, here's the urgent needs, here are some long-term goals that we need to kind of work on and we'll have, it'll be the same way in this process.
Yeah, and as we move into this whole process done in this new format, we will also be able to supply over time our formative assessment pieces, is that going to be something that we would receive in this or would that be a separate kind of document?
I would say it would be separate at this point. If you want to see something above and beyond what we're
Well, I think the superintendent has been clear that you're going to give us formative data as we move through the school year and that kind of thing.
That's right.
That's right. Because I think in a lot of cases, that formative data helps to show that all students are learning, even though they may not quite be at that level three yet. So for us, that's an important piece for us to have and to also include so that the public can see that. Thank you, good.
Okay. Okay, so that wraps up topic two. Now we'll head to topic three, which is our update on our COVID relief funding or what we commonly call ESER funds. We'll start again, as I typically do when we talk federal funding, is the alphabet soup of acronyms. We'll start with the fact that the first federal relief package was known as CARES, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. We called that funding CARES for a long time until the second package passed and then we moved to calling it ESER. And ESER stands for the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. In the three different acts, there are three elementary and secondary emergency relief funds, so that's why we call them ESER 1, ESER 2 and ESER 3. The second package that passed was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, commonly called SIRS, that's probably why we're using ESERs, no one likes that one. And then ARP, the American Rescue Plan, and so those, those last two packages were signed relatively back-to-back, one in December of 20 and the following in March of 21. That first package of CARES, and we've talked about this at several board presentations, was the primary source of our moving to one-to-one technology, so that particular federal package has been expended in full and has been for about a year. So those funds are used up, fully utilized and we are finished with that package. Next slide please. Okay, so the ESER timeline is, we're giving you this update tonight, again, at 9:30 22, all, all districts have to have that first package expended and we've met that deadline, we're good there. The next deadline will be September 30th of 23, the ESER 2 package must be fully expended and then September of 24, the third package must be fully expended. So this is our timeline for, related to this federal COVID relief funding. We will, go ahead and, next slide please. Give the board a reminder of the requirements of ESER 2, that particular award for us was worth 75.5 million dollars. It had the same allowable expenditures as ESER 1. What was new in that package was that districts actually have to go through an application process with KSDE and the Kansas Board of Education to approve the initiatives. And that's kind of the work that's been ongoing all year long is various application processes for this ESER 2 money. And then, next slide. The ESER 3 funds, that award was 169.6 million dollars. For the most part, same allowable uses. What was new in this particular act is you had to have some website information and that 20% of that award had to be, had to be focused on unfinished learning, learning loss initiatives and you had to have some proactive engagement of stakeholders. And I wanted to talk a little bit about that requirement and what we've been doing related to that. We had done that first survey in March of 21 that kind of started the, how should we spend the money, what are the needs, what are the most important needs of the district? We engaged parents, students, staff and community. In addition to that survey work, we also formed an ESER Financial Advisory Committee made up of stakeholders representing various groups, including foster care, special education, Native American newcomers, English language learners, juvenile detention, the NAACP, city council and various community partners and, and parents to provide additional feedback, a little bit more in-depth conversation, more than just what the survey was providing. And, and we've had some really, really good conversations, some good ideas being generated. We've been able to provide the solutions that we've already implemented to some of the, the concerns and, and that has really helped. A lot of our stakeholders didn't really realize what we had done so far, so it was, it's been very informative for them. We, we'll have a few more meetings, especially as we get through this kind of first big ESER 2 year, so we can kind of report back on, here's what we've done and here are some of the outcomes we saw from those dollars. So that will be, I think, really good information that those stakeholders can then share with their respective groups. We've had a, a number of conversations with our UTW groups, especially some of their pro reps, and they've had a lot of good feedback for us as well. A second survey went out in May of 22 to parent, staff, students and community, basically wanting again, please tell us if we're doing, we're on the right track, if there's additional needs that you've addressed since the last survey that went out, and then we have ample opportunities for people to engage with us on our website and social media platforms. So we feel we've really carried this engagement work and complied with the, kind of the spirit, the spirit of the requirement in addition to the letter of the requirement, which again, we could have probably checked the box with just the survey, but we wanted to do a little bit more. more than that. We wanted to make sure we were on the right track. So that's kind of related to the engagement. As I kind of get into kind of these final plans for this year, I wanted to remind the board the unique nature of these ESER funds, in that you can actually go backwards to pay for things with ESER that you might have paid for with different funds, as information comes to light. You can actually go back with all three awards back to March of 2020. And then you certainly can go forward, depending on the deadline of the particular source of funds. We are constantly evaluating the expenditures and the mixing and matching of those funds, what's allowable under the federal rules, to maximize the use of those federal dollars for the district. We understand that this is an historic investment, and we want to make sure we get as much out of it as we possibly can. And again, some of our budgetary needs aren't known until the end of the budget year. And I've shared with the board those kind of different points that come up during the course of the year, the most recent being, we just got a final number for our special ed reimbursement per teacher a week and a half ago. And that's at the very tail end of the fiscal year. So again, some of those pieces don't become clear until the very end of our budgetary process. So here's the, next slide, please. Here was our plan, and it's obviously small print, but this was what we handed out in November of last year, which was the ESER 2 plan, and how we were addressing learning laws, summer school, mental health, our para project to expand some hours in the buildings, a variety of topics. But since we've kind of learned and seen a lot more of what our budget really looks like, especially after our enrollment counts and the final premiums that we have paid to employees to do some additional work, to retain staff, we're going to revise this. We have revised this, so you can kind of just tear this one up, we're done with it. We have now applied for all of ESER 2 in a totally different format. So, next slide, please. So here is the amended application plan for ESER 2, which will cover fiscal year '22 and going into fiscal year '23. We applied to spend about $13.8 million in technology, just a little bit in supplies. We put all of the principal school need allocations directly into ESER 2, because it was allowable, so that's what we did. We also put in $43.7 million to maintain the staffing levels, maintain operations, and pay for those employee premium and additional jobs that we needed throughout the course of this year. We shared with the board through the process that it was very likely that we were going to need to use some of this federal funding to prevent cuts. We built a budget based on the fact that we thought a good number of our students would return post-COVID, and it did not happen. If you recall, that budgetary loss alone was $20 million figure, and then the bonuses that were paid to retain as many staff as we could through the course of that very difficult year. And then we'll charge those federal funds for the support in the amount of $2.3 million. Our total revised ESER 2 application that went in about three weeks ago, we applied for all $75.5 million in these categories, and we are now waiting for it to run through the approval process. Next slide.
Kathy?
What are indirect costs? Sure.
So, all federal funds allow for kind of overhead charges to be charged to the federal funds, because the federal fund won't go out and hire its own HR people to recruit. They won't hire financial people to do just the bookkeeping. So my services, HR services, any sort of overhead that the district that incurs related to supporting those funds, we can actually apply a percentage charge to the federal funds, and we do that with TIDL, we do that with Nutrition Services, and we're going to do it with ESER as well. You're allowed upwards of, to 10%. That, I think, is like 2. So we are very conservative in applying the indirect for federal funds.
Basil?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Before you go any further, I want to have a question on the ESER engagement work-
Yes.
About your survey. What was the response to the survey? Have you had a great response to it?
The first one, we had very solid, I think we had 6,000 responses. I have not seen the ESER, I have not seen the results from the second survey yet. So I can't answer that, but we will bring that back to you.
Okay. I was just wondering if you had a great response?
Yeah, that I don't know yet.
Okay.
We've been trying to get the needs assessment data, and not as focused on the survey yet, at least I haven't been.
Ms. Stabler, what we'll do is, Wendy, can you get us those numbers, and whatever, any data that we can gather from that, make sure the board has copies of that? Thank you.
So what this will mean is, your ESER 2 is then fully planned and fully applied for, and we will be somewhat finished with the ESER 2 dollars, and we'll be moving on to the ESER 3 plan. Next slide, please. Roughly, this is our plan for ESER 3 at this point in time. So we've kind of broken it out into a circle graph. You've got, again, a good chunk of ESER 3 will need to be spent to maintain operations, because we will not have enough funds to balance the budget, given those enrollment reductions. We told the board this early on, that we were going to have to use a mix of federal funds in order to balance the budget, and you can see it reflected in this chart. But additionally, we'll be looking at air quality and facilities projects, we will continue to support technology, all the mental health initiatives, all the learning-loss initiatives, including summer school, all of those that we had previously applied for in ESER 2, we took those out of ESER 2, and they're going into ESER 3. And that actually makes a lot of sense, given the learning-loss requirements, to make sure that we are meeting that requirement, and we should be at least 25% spent on learning-loss initiatives, if not a little higher, before we're said and done. So, you'll go back real quick, Patrick, to that graph. I will pause a minute to see if there are any questions related to the rough ESER 3. We've not applied for ESER 3 yet, this is still in process, but I wanted to share with the board kind of a rough draft of where we're going. Now, there are some bills that may be impacting us, as far as maybe loosening up ESER for other uses, maybe related to school safety, so that might come in and change some of our plans, but right now, this is where we're sitting.
Cheryl?
Yeah. I heard on the news the other night about the state of Kansas, and how there was a large percentage of unfunded money, that the ESER funds, the CARES funds, and so on, that hadn't been allocated nor spent. And what I'm seeing in this report is that we're doing an excellent job of allocating our money with ESER, well, the CARES money is all gone now, the ESER 2 money is all earmarked now, and we're moving into the planning for the ESER 3 dollars, which is this last graph that you just showed us, so that when the state looks at money that's available, are they looking, this is my question, are they looking at that, the second ESER 2 funds, that people have earmarked but haven't necessarily spent yet? Is that dropped into that huge number that showed up?
I think what the state is, they're probably looking at a number of data points, but I think what they're most likely looking, and Patrick, if you can back up, I think, one slide. So the black line on this particular chart is utilization of funds. So you can see, through 331, we were only 35, less than 40% utilized. So if I'm a member of KSDE, and I'm looking at Wichita, that has by far the largest federal fund allocation, haven't spent any of ESER 3 yet, ESER 2 is not even 40% spent, I may be concerned. But they don't see everything that we've got planned, they didn't know that we were changing our application, so they're kind of just looking at that one little piece and saying, we have concerns that you're not planning and moving the way you should, even though we actually have a very robust plan, it just hasn't hit all of their pieces of tracking yet. I think they're going to feel a lot better once the ESER 2 application gets approved, and then we go in with all of those actuals and require reimbursement for them. Then they're going to feel a lot better, because that's going to be, boom, $75 million spent, and we're going into ESER 3 application.
Okay. And so, once they, they have not approved the ESER 2, correct?
Correct. That's correct. We've not seen that yet.
So, we have waited in the wings, all this money, all these requests for funding-
Yes.
-once they finally approve our plan?
Absolutely. Waiting for approval.
What is the timeline on their approval?
Dr. Thompson, you might be able to answer this a little bit better, but typically, it has to go through the KSDE vetting first, and that can be anywhere from three to six weeks, and then it goes on the next scheduled Kansas Board of Education agenda. So I don't know if our application has even hit vetting yet. No. So we're probably at least another two to three weeks out on vetting, and then whatever the next board meeting would be. So it could be August before we know for sure that ESER 2 is approved, and then we can start pulling down those funds.
And that's the reason why we've approved some funding under general fund-
Yes.
-knowing full well that we're going to move it to ESER, once we get the plan approved.
Yeah. In fact, that's why so many of your agenda items actually reference both funding sources, because we may start with one, and then we may turn and say, okay, well, now we're going to go after, that once we make sure we're approved, and we make sure we're good, we'll go back and go apply it for ESER. So anything we think might fit, we're putting ESER on the agenda.
Yeah.
So you know that it could go either way, or be a combination.
Because Wichita has a bigger budget, we can move money around a bit more easily than a small school district with maybe 200 kids in the whole district. They have to be hurting with this long delay period in the approvals.
Yes. It has been much more of a struggle for federal funds at the smaller school level, particularly in the capital projects area, because there are so many steps, and then the challenges related to supply chain, and the approval process being this elongated, and you can't get a purchase order cut, because you don't have the approval. That process for small school districts that don't have enough cash to fund that has proven, and we've heard a lot, that really just want to give it back. They just don't want to deal with it. We have more resources, so we can kind of fight through some of those challenges a bit better. It's been a difficult struggle for small schools.
Yeah. And I actually feel great compassion for those smaller districts, because they need the money. They just don't have the money to be able to move around-
Right.
...while something's being approved. Once this is approved, say, August the 15th, or whenever it is approved, basically, all of our ESER 2 monies will be committed to, and will be on the road to being spent, totally.
Our hope is that, once we're approved, we actually have all of the, because most of that has been spent, if not, should be all of it, by June 30, maybe in July, and we'll be able to go right and get reimbursed for all of it. That's our hope, that everything moves through-
And that's perfect, because we can then reuse that money to go through the same process-
Right.
...with ESER 3 funds.
Exactly. Exactly. And we'll be able to get, in ESER 3, we'll really be able to kind of focus on some of those capital projects, which we really haven't started talking a lot about. We have a plan, but since that's primarily in ESER 3, we're going to be bringing some more information back to you on kind of what that entire project plan looks like.
Yeah. Because, you know, my goal as a board member is, we don't give any money back.
Right. Which is, again, why this is whole process, because we're right there with you, we don't want to let anything, we don't want to leave anything on the table, related to making sure that we're addressing all the capital needs we can, we've addressed the mental health, the learning loss, all of those things, where this money was meant to try to get us back to some level of normal. We want every single dollar to be expended, we want every single dollar to have some sort of meaningful outcome, as much as we possibly can. So it is a heavy lift, and that's why you're seeing a lot of movement, so that we can maximize that return on this investment, because it is, for the taxpayer, it's a huge investment in what we're doing.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to just echo-
I'm sorry, Julie. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just want to echo that thank you, because you guys have done a phenomenal job. So thank you very much for your work, and the work of your department.
Yeah, the teams have been, you're right, they've been phenomenal through this process. This is a challenge.
DeeDee Stroud, I just want to say her name out loud, she's amazing, and she has kept us on track, and pulled us in, and kept track of all of the notebooks of laws and rules and expectations, and just has done a phenomenal job. I just want to make sure we call her name out.
The work involved, I mean, you think even your school bookkeeper, who on top of their normal spending and planning, now has an allocation of federal funding that has to be spent. And so, school principals, school bookkeepers, I mean, top-down, everyone's impacted by this money and this work. It has been, it's good, and it's necessary, but to try to spend these dollars in the timeframe given, under the rules, and complying with all of the pieces and parts that go with it, it takes all of us, and it has been, it's been all hands on deck. So really, thanks to the entire system for kind of working through all these processes and frameworks that we put in place, in order to make sure that we're accounting for every dollar, and making sure that it's tied to a project we can report on, it's been something.
Yeah. It's been rough. Yeah, I can imagine.
So, again, in summary, we made our recommendations on the revenue-neutral rates, we've provided you kind of that early estimate that we intend to be overall down, over a mil, on the overall mil levy. We gave you the requirements of KSA 72, 1163, you can expect a little bit of homework from us here this week, and then we've provided you some updates on our ESER plans. And so with that, unless there are any more questions, that is all on my agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Miscellaneous, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Patrick. Mr. Reeser, Board President, and Julie Hedrick, Vice President. I have three things that I'd like to share tonight. First of all, I'd like to just reiterate what Wendy shared with you earlier about the WPS representing at the River Fest. I spent several days and evenings there myself, and everywhere I looked, all I saw was WPS proud shirts, I saw our kids, and they were yelling, Dr. Thompson, I mean, it was just an awesome representation of WPS. We were everywhere, all over the place. I saw board members, just a lot of people. It was just good stuff. I often say, most of the time, I'll say, Wichita is reflecting in WPS, and WPS is part of the Wichita community, and we are so connected and integral together, and that was very evident at the 50th anniversary at the River Festival. I'm also super excited about the next opportunity to highlight our collaboration in the community, which will be this coming Saturday, so take your notes out, so you can write it down, if you want to participate. This coming Saturday, June the 18th, during the community's Juneteenth celebration. At 10 o'clock on Saturday, students and staff from our base program will be walking in the parade, and any of you want to walk with us, we'll walk together, like we did with the River Fest. And at 11 a.m. on that same day on Saturday, Hite's marching band will kick off on the main stage activity, so our band will participate as well. And from 11 to 4, we'll again be sponsoring our Kids Corner, and we'll be distributing free books to young people in our community, as we did before, so if anyone wants to sign up and volunteer to pass out books, we'd be happy to have you there. And all of this is happening at McAdams Park, and we just look forward to seeing any of you who would like to participate. And last, but not certainly least, I want to give you a brief wrap-up from our recent KISA accreditation visit. KISA stands for Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. It is the state's K-12 district-level accrediting model, and it is focused on the five strategic priorities set forth by KSDE, which aligns with our strategic plan that you all have built. Our strategic, that meeting was held on April the 29th, and we had our outside visitation team, and our school district is in year five of that accreditation cycle, and this year- And this year, we are in year two of the second evaluation cycle. So, that's where we are. The W P S team was led by the incomparable deputy superintendent, Mr. Gilbert Alvarez, focused on kindergarten readiness and our early childhood and pre-K work. Um, we also were able to talk with them about our third grade reading proficiency and our individualized plans of study, our graduation rates, and our post-secondary effectiveness and success. Our W P S team, and some of them are in the room today, they just knocked it out of the ballpark. They were amazing. Um, and so, we had folks from Kansas City, Topeka, K S D E. I'm probably missing some folks, O L Dorado, um, just some, we had our team that come in and just give us great feedback and opportunities to be able to celebrate, talk about the challenges that we have and to work together to work on solutions. So, I'd like to also at this time, thank the Board of Education and the administrators and then most importantly, the principals and the teachers who work hard every day in this school district to do what's right by kids. And so, on that note, I will conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Patrick, next item.
Next item, Board of Education, report and requests.
Hazel.
Yes. Uh, first of all, um, May was a very busy month. We had our graduations, our graduates and our graduations. And I was very, um, fortunate to be able to attend the North High graduation and the Heights graduation. And, um, the Wichita Public Schools Retirement and Longevity Reception that was held at Botanica Gardens, that was very nice. It was a beautiful evening. I also was able to close out the year attending a few of my school's staff, final staff meetings and P T O meetings to see the, hear the plans that they have for the summer and next year. I want to also, uh, talk about a, um, event that happened here yesterday here at A Mac Center for the Indigenous Graduation, the First Annual Indigenous Graduation Celebration. And I want to thank Wichita Public Schools for facilitating that event and the different organizations, T P, M I W, Southwind Native American Church, M M I P, who co, who hosted the event. It was very successful. We had about 100 people in attendance and it was a very nice evening. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Hazel. Kathy?
Hazel, I want to congratulate you on a very successful event last night. I too went and, um, it was personal for me because I've married into a Native American family and I'm the wannabe, um, that's my name, that's my tribe, wannabe. And it was wonderful and I anticipate and look forward to next year having many more of our Native American graduates attend this ceremony as I'll be blasting it all over the place. So, it was very good. Congratulations. She did this in three weeks. So, she really pulled it together. I too was able to attend Northwest High School graduation as well as Levy. I was humbled and I was excited, especially when I was sitting next to Mr. Alvarez at the Northwest High School graduation. And not too long ago, he was the principal of my child's graduation. So, it was just kind of, kind of uncanny that I would be sitting there next to him. Um, I was also able to attend Wilbur's eighth grade promotion and it was just as effective as though it were a senior in the high school graduating. So, that was, the, the auditorium was filled and those kids were excited. They were not sure how to respond to all of the praise given to them. But, you know, I, I applaud our educators. They taught our students, not only academically, but they taught our students how to overcome. They, these students overcame the last two years of challenges they never in their wildest dreams would have anticipated that they would face. And so, our educators deserve, I, I wish I had everything that I could give to them. So, educators, if you're listening, thank you very much for teaching our children how to overcome. Um, I also attended, this was very sad, one of our North High graduates, um, passed away due to fentanyl. And, um, I was at the, at the funeral and, and she's a personal friend of mine, the mother. So, that, that was, we really need to pay attention to this chronic drug problem that is now happening in our country. And if we think that little old Wichita, Kansas cannot be a victim to that, we are wrong. We are very wrong. And so, um, I would advocate for stronger education on drugs for our kids. Um, if you can't sleep and you need a sleeping pill, go to your mom. Go to your mom. Do not go to the streets and pick up a pill. Um, I was able to eat breakfast with the River Festival Admiral Shuan and there I saw Wendy. And I knew that there was an admiral that had red hair a couple of years ago, but I didn't put two and two together. So, it was a delight to see administration as part of the community and River Festival events. Um, I too attended the River Festival Parade. I have a lot of pictures, Wendy, of, um, our kids in the band. And was so impressed that, um, they were proud. Those kids played proudly. And I was excited to be able to, to be a part of that and to see that. Um, let me think, what else? I attended all of my schools. I spoke to the staff at Wilbur. I'm excited that they were there and they taught my kids. And so, there's a camaraderie there already. And, uh, May was a very busy month. You are right, Hazel. And, um, the last of the month, you had these educators that were trying to pull it together to put closure on a year. And I anticipate this next year, we're going to start out with just such excitement and enthusiasm. So, that is my report. I do have a request, Dr. Thompson. When I was a substitute teacher, I could go on the website and of course, like everybody else in the community can do that. But there was, um, at the top, there's a sign-in icon. You can click it to sign in. And I was able to sign in using my I D and my password as an employee. Um, because I'm not an employee now, I can't. But I, I think it's important that board members are kept updated as to what our educators are receiving. And I wondered if, um, if the board members might not be able to have access to that website that our teachers have access to. This would require a sign-in capability and it would not be for public, but it would just be for us to be updated as to the resources that are given to our educators and, and what, what they're receiving so we can have, um, an idea of maybe what's going on in their lives and what they're doing. Because not all educators will be able to, um, come to, to a board member. Not all of them would anyway. So, that's the only thing that I have, um, as far as requests and reports. Thank you.
Julie?
Well, um, I echo also that May was a very busy month. I, I love going to graduations. I think that's one of our favorite, uh, one of our best roles that we get to play as board members. It's, uh, just so, um, so satisfying to attend those and, and see our kids graduate. I had the opportunity to, uh, attend Southeast and also Chester Lewis. And then, um, and then the promotion at Price Harris Elementary or Price Harris Magnet. Um, so, that was so great. Also got to attend the retirement celebration at Botanica, which was a really nice, um, really nice event for our retiring employees and for those who have met longevity, um, uh, marks. Um, so, that was a really nice event. Um, I would also like to report to the board, um, that as your representative on, um, the Kansas Board of Education, I attended the board meeting this past, um, weekend. And, um, one of the many benefits that we receive from that organization is an excellent legislative update. And that was one of the items, um, that was presented at the board meeting this past week, this past weekend. Um, I believe Superintendent Thompson provided that, um, document produced by, um, the Kansas Association of School Boards to all of us as board members. I just would encourage you to look at it closely because it's a very excellent update and again, just reflects the benefits that we receive from the Kansas Association of School Boards.
Thank you, Julie. Um, on May 2nd, Julie Hedrick requested staff to begin the process of aligning members' district to comply with, uh, Kansas Law 72 dash 1077. I just wanted to give, update the board and the public on where that request is at. Um, I first wanted to make sure that the public understands and the board members understand that the reason we are doing this is, well, first off, we're following the format we used 10 years ago before any of us were ever on the board. But it's to meet the state statute requiring B O E districts being less than or greater than 5% of the target population based on that 2020 census. It also places a priority on considering new boundary frameworks that place a high school in each B O E district. This was kind of on the wish list of many board members for many years. Uh, we've gone many years where District Three did not have a high school. So, when we were thinking about redrawing the district boundaries, we were like, well, is that possible? So, that's the other one priority we have. But the most important one, and that's based off a state law, and that is we must keep board members' districts as compact and equal in population as possible. So, um, we have a pretty straightforward process on this. It will require though, uh, a, a meeting that I want to announce tonight. And I'm going to make sure Patrick kind of, uh, follows me up on this. We do, so after tonight, we have a June 30th meeting, which is a special B O E meeting. Uh, and that will be here at A Mac. And that's at noon.
That is correct.
Then we will have a first review of the maps on July 11th in a special B O E meeting in which we will identify between now and before then, uh, which stakeholders need to be identified. And that will be July 11th, also a special B O E meeting. And it will also be here at A Mac at noon, July 11th. Is that correct? Noon.
That is correct.
Okay. And then at the July 25th meeting, the board, uh, at that July 11th meeting, you'll be presented some maps. You can have your in, input. And, uh, uh, actually the sta, the staff's already started this process. Uh, so, any kind of comments or, or suggestions you want to make, feel free to, to reach out to almost anyone on this board about what you like or dislike about any of the maps or the plans. Uh, at the July 25th meeting, hopefully we'll narrow down on July 11th which map we are kind of heading toward. At the July 25th meeting, uh, we will have a second review of those plans and, uh, and adopt a motion to, to have new boundaries. Ernestine?
When the boundary is for a district is changed, does that necessarily mean the boundaries for the schools are changed?
No. Uh, because our criteria is we must meet the, uh, compact and equal in population requirements by state statute.
No gerrymandering.
And no gerrymandering. Well, I think that's what they imply by compact. Uh, definitely no gerrymandering and we are using the same process. And we are, uh, basically letting the numbers and the population growth and, and decreases in, in certain areas dictate what our new boundaries will be. Uh, Julie?
Um, we got maps in our packets that Patrick sent to us, but they're small and kind of difficult to read. I was wondering is there, could we have an opportunity to like come look at? Like I assume you have big maps, um...
Or even just bigger individual maps that we could put together?
Let us, let us work on that. We can, we can get them as big as we can, but we may have to take those out of our, well, we, our people can run those, yes. I'm looking at my peeps. We got you. We'll get, we'll get you guys bigger maps and Magna Flying Glasses.
Yeah, because I, I'd like to study them and, you know, be able to give valuable feedback.
That's fair. We'll get those out.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes, these boundaries are, are we, like Julie, I think I heard you say that, well, I've got 6% and everybody else has got 5, so to speak. I'm not quoting you. So, are all the districts going to be equal?
As equal as possible. There will still be some, uh, it's impossible to make, each one approximately has to be how much, Patrick? Fifty-five thousand, one hundred?
Uh, yes, that sounds about right. And then all the maps provided by the county, I believe, uh, each new district is within 1/10 of 1%.
Yeah, so we're, so we basically, the, the maps that the staff has already started on are about as close as you can actually get.
So, I know that this is not going to change our schools for them. But for us, it might add a school or take away a school from our district. Is that right?
Uh, the only criteria, I mean, the only criteria right now is, uh, East High will hopefully get into District Three, uh, if that continues to be a priority of this board. But I don't think any elementary schools are moving. I, Patrick, do we?
Uh, the priorities requ, uh, we, we requested that we not switch to, uh, schools between board members. So, that was a priority.
So, we're just talking about high schools primarily?
Uh, yeah, and it's only one.
And it's only, it's just East High?
It's just East High.
Okay, so, nothing will change in my district?
Uh, we will get you a detailed map. Uh, I can't guarantee you there's any major changes, but, uh, I didn't, at first glance, I did not see any big changes.
I wasn't sure either. It's small, like Julie said.
Yeah, it's like Julie says, the maps are kind of small. Uh, on the, uh, July 11th meeting, we will definitely get into those type of details of like if there's an elementary school that got moved or a mid, a middle school that got moved, but, uh...
So, this is just going to affect us. So, Julie should get less in your area because...
Correct. I'm supposed to have, I've, I've got to go down in population. I had too many people, so...
How do you keep track of all of that?
So, my area is going to have to be smaller.
And this is why we're doing this, because you initiated this?
Correct. I initiated it because I had too many and I didn't want to be out of the con, conforming with the statute.
And this is based off the census of 2020?
Yes.
And this is 2022?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just curious, why haven't we done this before?
We have.
Oh.
Every 10 years, there's a census and every 10 years, we have to redraw our district lines.
So, in 2012, lines were drawn?
Yes.
10 years ago? Okay, thank you. I'm just learning.
No, no, that's fine. It takes a while to get the census information. Uh, that's why, uh, you'll, you probably saw in the news, uh, there was, uh, redrawing of congressional, uh, boundaries, redrawing of state represent, yeah, Cedric County, and now it's our turn. Uh, and luckily, uh, we were very close to not even needing to do this at all. Uh, there was only one district that was slightly over. Um, and, uh, so, uh, it should be a fairly easy process.
Three is short. Number two has got too many. So, it's really just that, that part is really going to get the shift.
And then this, and then the second half of this, which is, uh, of Julie's request, which is, uh, uh, I want to make sure that, uh, the public understands and the board understands is that, um, on the August 8th meeting, excuse me, let me back up. July 25th, will that be back at North High or is that also at A Mac?
Uh, July 25th, we will return to North High School. Construction there is...
And that is a regular meeting at 6:00 P. M.?
Yes.
Okay. On August 8th, uh, the board will have a first review of a proposed ballot question switching to members' district-only primaries and elections. And then on the August 22nd meeting...
August, what was that, first?
Uh, August 8th.
8th?
Which is a regular Board of Education meeting. And again, this is separate from the boundary maps. Uh, the board has a first review of the proposed ballot question switching to members' district-only primaries and election. As you know, um, we have, we are the only governing body in, in Cedric County that has, um, a hybrid system of nominating in a district only, but then you run district-wide in a general election.
Yeah, citywide.
Uh, district-wide, because our district boundaries don't fit city boundaries exact...
I understand. I'm trying to say because we have a district, like District Three, and we have a school district.
Yes.
Wichita district. So, the word district has...
I, it is a little, and again, this is what part of the confusion is. It is a little, and again, this is what part of the confusion is. And so, we will determine August 8th on whether or not to put that on the ballot. We do not have the authority ourselves to make that switch. We have to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. So really, August 8th, the question will be, do we want to put this in front of the voters? It will not be whether you agree with it or don't agree with it. It will be more of a question is, shall we align with Cedric County Commission, the City Council, state representative districts? Where it is clear, two people go from the primary to the general, and then you're voted on in your district. And that will be hopefully on August 8th. And then, we'll discuss it first time. And then, we'll have a second review on August 22nd, which is also a regular meeting. July 11th will be our special meeting here at AMAC at noon to have a first review of the plans and hopefully get a frontrunner of what map this board and the community prefers. July 25th will be a regular meeting at North High, 6:00 PM, in which we will approve that map, hopefully. And August 8th, we will be, will be a regular meeting, and it will be a review of the proposed ballot question. August 22nd will be the regular BOE meeting. And that will be the second review of the proposed ballot question. Because there is a deadline in order to put this question on the ballot for the November 2022 election, which is what we decided, which we, everyone agreed that we did not want to pay for a special election. We didn't want to charge the school district taxpayers for a special election. And since there's already a November election, it will be on, hopefully, on the ballot. And that's my report. Cheryl?
Thank you very much for that. Because it's very clear what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. And I want to say again, just so that everybody knows, this does not affect school boundaries. This is not a school boundary change. This is a Board of Education boundary change. Because by law, we have to do it because we've got one district, Julie's district, that has too many people. And every 10 years, we have to do this. And we've done it before, and we'll do it 10 years from now. So the, for my reports, I obviously had a busy Mayla, as everybody has said. We all attended graduations. And truly, that's one of the funnest things that we do. And the retirement dinner is, or the retirement party is one of my other really favorite things to do. Because I get to see lots of old friends and, who are happy because they're getting longevity and/or they're moving on to a new stage in their life. And it's a fun time for all of us. I do have one request, and that is, we have a really monumental summer school program going on now. Lots of kids are in summer school trying to stop that learning loss. And I'm asking that we have an update on the summer school after it's over? With how many kids attended? And just a little bit about the kinds of things that we did to stop the learning loss for kids? So that our public gets that? Because we tend to think school's out. Well, school's not out. We still have a lot of kids in summer school. And so, we just need an update on that, if we could, please.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Ernestine? We saved the best for last.
I, I don't have anything to even meet all of the rest of the comments. Because they've been, they really are just wonderful to go to the graduations and to see the kids. And there's these great big bodies with little kids inside. And they think they're so grown up, and they are. And yet, you just see these kids and you know that, where they started. And I just wanted to hug them every one. They rushed past so fast, you could hardly even shake their hand, let alone, because they were racing past. And the same kind of thing, I wanted to say thank you again for the, for the Indigenous graduation ceremony. We didn't have as many as we've got. What we find out that we have a number of Native Americans that graduated from our public schools is 92 or something?
92, yes.
Yes. And I think that that's just a wonderful program, if we can just continue it in the future. And that does remind me that our River Festival and the powwows and the things that, I am startled at how self-denigrating the city of Wichita people are. We have such cool things going on. And I've said it to some of you, and with Wendy and the River Festival. I used to live on, right by the Hudson River, this magnificent, huge, deep river. And they had junkyards all along. And then, I moved back home to Wichita, Kansas, with a river about this deep. And we have this fantastic festival of the River Festival. And we've got the things that are happening at the Indian Center and the powwows. My daughter-in-law is a Native American, and we went there and had some, just a grand time there. And our school, our students in this River Festival just really, you could tell they were just proud to be doing what they were doing. And I, I'm really proud of us. I'm proud of us on the board. I don't know that the rest of the world knows. We don't do this for any pay. There's no money in it, whether we've got a big district or a little district. And I think that we've got a really fantastic school district. And I think that it's making, well, we're becoming a model for the whole Midwest, if not for further. And I'm just very proud. And you've heard me say it before, if you don't toot your own horn, you don't get your own horn tooted. So I'm tooting.
Thank you so much, Ernestine. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business?
Hazel?
Yes, I actually am not, can you hear me? I'm not sure if this is actually a request or if it's new business.
Okay.
But what I would like to see is an overview on the safety procedures we're practicing in our schools. Is that, would that be new business?
I can tell you, and I apologize, I meant to announce that in my board request or reports. And that is, we will have, since it's part of our strategic plan, we will have a school safety update in late summer. I'm not sure exactly which one of these in August, but there will, oh, it'll be in July? Okay. We will have a school safety update report in July.
And all of the questions that our UTW officer asked about, I think, will likely be included in that report.
Does that, first off, let me make, does that cover what you were...
Yes. I just wanted an overview of what we're doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. Kathy?
Yes, I've been receiving a few phone calls and emails from parents where they are tightening up their choices of what their children, their students can watch in our classrooms. And I'm wondering if we can talk about policy number 6436 next meeting, which is, it refers to the criteria for use of videos, DVDs, and other non-print media. But in Section 2, Letter D, it talks about the prior written lawful custodial permission shall be obtained if a video, and I'm just wanting to talk about amending that to when a video, giving the parents the wide-open option that includes everything that an educator might want to show. Specifically, the ones I've heard from, they're talking about Disney, that Disney Plus is being shown. And there are parents out there that would prefer their child not see that.
I'm going to defer to Cheryl on this item, since she's got the most experience on this board. If there is a board request on a specific policy, does it go to the policy committee first? Or do you take the, what her request is, and then bring it back to her? Or...
The ones that come back to our board policy committee, that Julie and I sit on that, are the ones that are direct policies of the board itself. What goes back on any other policy, it goes back to the superintendent and her team. They review it and then bring back recommendations on whatever it is. So it's not that we can't discuss it and give our ideas, but the actual work is done by the people closest to the, to the problem.
Okay. I think what we'll do then is, if, Kathy, if you'd put in a, or another request on that one?
Sure.
And we'll start that process.
Okay. Thank you.
And that request will go to the superintendent.
Okay.
Any other new business? Seeing none. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
I move the board recess into an executive session for purposes of consulting with the board's attorney, who will provide advice concerning the application of a state law as it applies to the district pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act exception as allowed under KSA 754319B2. And the board return from executive session to this room at 9:00.
Second.
I second.
Okay. Moved by Julie, seconded by Cheryl to move it into executive session. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 6-0.
Extend the executive session, number one, for an additional 15 minutes. Returning to this room at 9:15.
Second. Moved by Julie, seconded by Stan. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Cheryl Logan, Stan Reser, Julie Hedrick, Hazel Stabler.
I move the board recess to an executive session to discuss matters concerning the security of the board, the schools, school buildings and facilities, which would, if discussed in the open meeting, jeopardize such security measures pursuant to the Kansas Open Meeting Act exception as allowed under KSA 754319B12C. The open meeting will resume in this room at 9:30.
I second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes 4-0. Freezer, Julie Hedrick, Kathy, and Hazel. The Board of Education is returning from executive session. No action needed or taken in either session. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment?
I move that the board adjourn.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Kathy to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 4-0. Cheryl, Stan, Kathy, and Hazel.